Okay, let's go to order the regularly scheduled Canterbury Board of Selectmen meeting. It's April 1st, 2025. In attendance, Mark Weeks, John Lane and myself and Jordan Lumpkins, our regional administrator. And duly noted, we don't have any teddy bears in the audience today, so it's a 5% reduction in the library budget. I will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to make one change to the agenda tonight, the executive session that was scheduled to discuss the next contract cycle with the Town Hall Bargaining Unit. They're not available tonight to meet, so we'll move that out. I'd actually like to get that started as quick as possible because we're coming up close to a drop date. So, motion to remove item four from the agenda. Okay, second?
Sorry, I was reading, what was the motion?
Remove item five.
Yeah.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we'll strike that and then read under everything on the way down. So, meeting minutes from November 19, 2024. Don't ask me why.
That's a little ludicrous.
Yep, March 18 of 2024. I assume that that's March ID to 2025. Yeah. Okay, got a second?
Well, I got some discussion.
All right, well, second and we'll discuss.
Second for discussion purposes. I don't know that, so I didn't care about the transfer station fee. I don't know that Mark ever suggested $100. I think he made a comment about it kind of jokingly, but it says, yeah, it was, I mean, it says, and we suggested $100, I don't know.
I did.
Okay, all right.
That was just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, all right, well.
And I don't, and are you good with the wording in there? Because I know you wanted it spelled out pretty clearly as to your intention.
Well, it says that I stated that I think there should be an increase of $20. That he stated that he does think there should be an increase of $20, that it should be proportional to the increased budget amount. I don't think I said that.
You said, I said, would not be proportional to the increase. He's stating, oh, I thought he said does not. He does think, yeah, should be does not.
Yeah, that he does not think there should be an increase.
When I read that, I basically heard that.
Does not think there should be, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll get that amended.
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, so we'll.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Put that on top here and have that taken care of tomorrow. Yeah, geez, you know, you think you're gonna get him, then he reads the minutes.
Lawyer or something?
Man, really, counselor.
Get some contracts, it'd be fun.
This was the week to try it.
All right, next item we have, and why, why don't I have it in my packet here?
With the vault trust?
Is the, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I have that, okay, yeah, there it is right in front of me. Yep, so we have a tax refund. It is $339, $339.71 from line 3-4,000 for vault trust. So, do we have a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is EMPG resolution, and I'm not seeing that in the packet here. It's gonna be sitting on top of, that's gonna be sitting right on top of my desk. Let me just run down to my office and get that. So we'll take a two-minute hiatus here and I'll run down and grab that off my desk. Okay, back to item four, EMPG Resolution. This is our annual resolution for the Emergency Management Program Grant. The state enters into this agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Emergency Management Homeland Security. So, we do this every year, so we're eligible to participate in that program. And so I will just kind of read through this quickly. It says authorizing resolution of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Canterbury. Certification, I, Chris Rillipki, first selectman at town of Canterbury, to hereby certify that the following is true and correct as a resolution adopted by the town of Canterbury is duly called meeting on April 1st of 2025, at which quorum was present and acting throughout, and the resolution has not been modified, rescinded, revoked, and is at present in full force and effective. Resolve the town of Canterbury matter with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division, Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate and further resolve that. Dan Chambers as the EMD Director at town of Canterbury is authorized and directed to execute, deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Canterbury to perform all acts and things which he or she deems to be necessary, appropriate to carry out the terms and can, the terms of such documents. He understaffed, firmly certifies that Daniel Chambers now holds the office of Emergency Management Director, and he or she has held that office since August 29, 2024. So, that is our resolution. So I have a motion to approve. Any discussion?
What does he mount on that? It varies year by year?
No, I think it's about, it's either $6,000 or $9,000.
Oh, went up then since.
Yeah, I think it was six, I think it was six, I don't know if they, yeah.
But it's five.
No, yeah, then there was other funding that had been made available during, during COVID, which probably isn't, isn't there, but, all right. So, all in favor? Aye, okay, we'll get that processed and off to the State of Connecticut. All right, next item, and we'll see how far we get on this tonight, is review the municipal budget. So, do we want to start at the top and work our way down line by line, or are we not that far?
We only, we only had a couple that we, I don't know about where else they are, except we still can't do anything about the salaries. I mean, not salaries, but the pay with the 5% placeholder.
Yeah, that, yeah, that were, had to place holder for 5%. The other one we were talking about, hey, let me see if I can find the line on here somewhere, it was the agent to the elderly, and looking at doing an adjustment to her compensation. And I can't, of course, no, I can't find the line I'm looking for, but that's.
I know I didn't bring the one that was marked up.
We'll find it.
Is it 1511?
Yeah.
1511?
Yeah.
Sounds about right, towards the bottom, I know that much, yep, there we go.
1511.
I spoke with our agent about that, and she was, and as I said at our last meeting, I have no problem making an adjustment in that compensation because of the extra roles and responsibilities she's taken on, which range from the Connecticut Food Bank Program that she, that she oversees, our transit program, which we seem to be getting more and more writers, which is a good thing. So, John Sandigate, the bus driver, is less bored, he's actually has writers in there, she's taken on that, overseeing that program and managing all the reporting with that, which is fairly onerous. I've screwed up a couple of reports, I think she's now gonna cut me out of the loop completely, which is a good thing. You know, so she's taken a lot more work with that and built out the craft program and the senior games programs, which are very popular on Wednesday afternoon hill down here. Now, I spoke with Karen and, you know, she was, and I offered that we take a look at going up from 9563 to 12,000 even, which, and she was, she was happy with that, and I also think that it's less of a hit to the town than 15, but I also think it helps, it does show that she has taken on more, more roles and responsibilities with that, with that position.
So 1511 is gonna get adjusted to 12?
To 12, yeah. And that was one of the, one of the ones I was hanging out there. Now, with that adjustment in place, as I had penciled in 15, we're actually looking at a $56,637 increase year over year, 2%. It's actually 2% at 61,002. It takes a lot to move that percentage, but at 2% of $56,637, 56637 increase over last, over last year, and that's factoring in, and we don't have numbers, complete numbers yet, but we're using a 9% increase, which is the figure that's been put out there for the healthcare, for the health plan, and I penciled in 5% for the bargaining units, increase in compensation, and that, as I told everyone, is just a placeholder and a cap, it's a twofer. So.
Cause they're gonna have to negotiate, match and pay for the health insurance too.
Possibly, yeah, possibly, yeah. Yeah, and that always factors into it, you know.
Contributing, yeah.
Yeah, that always factors into the total compensation package, yeah. So I don't know, what do you have, John, what do you have for me? Anything down there, or comments, questions, anything you see that you wanna make?
I don't think so, we still have to wait on that other thing, I think.
Jordan, on your end, as our regional administrator and taking on that role, what do you see in this budget that jumps out at you? Yeah, well, we'll put you to work on, we'll put you to work on this. What do you see, anything that, that you find, you know, worth commenting on or significant?
No, just going through it. I noticed, I guess, fire marshal went up a good bit.
Yeah, that's shared with Plainfield. We share, we share Dino with Plainfield, and essentially that's, that's, we got half the cost of that, and it's whatever Dino and Kevin sort of negotiated down, that was a significant increase, yeah. Yeah, I hate to say, but I think sometimes we're, well, we just feel lucky we have a fire marshal, because sometimes filling these slots are difficult.
Oh, yeah. Do we know, so, the recreation one?
Yeah.
I know, so it was 30,000 last year, you're cutting 10 off of it, down to 20,000. The excuse being that.
Reason.
The extra 10 given for the field.
That was for the field that didn't, didn't go under fruition, yeah.
I guess my, my only concern with it, and I, I get that, and I'll, I'll give some credit to that. I'm looking back at the 2223 year, which was the 20,000. So 2223, it was 20,000, 2425, it went up to 30, now back down to 20. In 2223, the actual spent was 19,922, which is pretty much all of that 20,000. Do we know how much the committee actually spent last year? I'm just concerned because they, they're, the things that they spend money on are pretty fixed, and I don't, if those prices went up between 22 and 23, I don't wanna put them in a position.
Yeah, I don't have that to hand, but I will say too, they also have about 80 odd thousand in PRA CapEx money as well to tap into. So they're, they're, they actually have a pretty significant.
In fact, we pulled some one year, didn't we? Cause they weren't using any of it. So we do two years back?
I get, I think John, John made that motion, yeah, a couple of years ago, yeah, that was, yeah.
Got their attention and making their money back.
Yeah, yeah, but they are, but I know they're sitting on a, on a, on the CapEx money from PRA, so I'm comfortable with this, I mean, it's, I, it's one of those things, if it did run short, I mean, we can always take a look at an extra appropriation if they came back in.
Just tell them to use the other money.
That might be a suggestion, but that's what it's there for, yes. But we're not that mean, are we? No, no, we're not that mean. We're actually, as a board, I think we're, we're pretty reasonable sometimes, yeah.
Not done yet.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes, sometimes. All right, Mark?
Gee, I don't know what I really wanna talk about. Oh, my favorite, Firehouse budget. Now, Mullin is around, I'm trying to get a feel for everyone. Yeah, so, you, John, would like to think of them as a subcontractor to the town, and we'll fix about the deras.
It's not about what I think or what I like, it's about just the, logically, what the relationship appears to be based on how things are set up. And, and that, we can get into it in Selectment's report, that brings up other questions, as we had our first IFOC meeting, so.
So, Chris, I didn't agree with him at first either, was to pay the bills of the fire department, saying we pay for all the equipment and everything else, through the CIP and everything, and we never get anybody to tell us what's going on, we can't get anything audited. We don't know last year if they spent their budget or didn't spend their budget, how much they put in that, Board of Finances found that out, they just keep whatever you give them, so that's treating it like a contractor. So, I don't go along with that, because now the town can't track their money, which they feel they should be able to. As far as the ambulance go, they can track it because we pay the salaries. And they're telling you there's other stuff to rent the bay, that seems a little questionable. That was back from the old days. So, if it was me, I would like to see that we pay the bills, they keep the ambulance money, and if they needed more, we certainly wouldn't let them run out, but when I look through this here and I see $41,000 for recruitment and retention, which is basically parties and dinners and stuff that they do, I don't see much recruitment and retention. And then I see utilities at $23,000 to run that fire department, I think, I don't know, it's, this seems excessive for that building. Personal equipment, 24,000, that's, that seems okay, I mean, that's up there, I don't think they're gonna struggle with that. So I just think we could shave this down if we put in something in our budget for 150,000 maybe to pay the expenses of the fire department. And if they should run out, that means every month when they come in and they want a disbursement to cover the bills, there's gonna be some backup on it. And if they should run out, I can't imagine, but if they should run out and they got proper backup, then certainly can give them the money, but I just see a lot of fluff in this, especially seeing they're keeping the ambulance money and everything else. I don't know, the performance has been poor. They just had a fire call a week ago, I think it was on Raymond Schoolhouse Road. Scotland was on Brooklyn Road, responded, they were told turn back. Central Village was told to turn back. We hadn't signed on, so there's another disaster. We had an incident out here in the shopping center the other night, I think we were the third company in out of four, and we were the closest by miles. So, I, you know, if they were right on Johnny, on the spot, and everything was going good, you reward for performance, but they gotta take a serious look at their operation, and I think throwing money at it is not the way to fix it. So, I would be willing to, like, throw 150 in the budget, but we control how it gets spent, well, whatever, however you wanna work it out, we get bills for it, because just give them 200,000, we already know the 40,000 of us are having a good time.
So it's revisiting that proposal from a couple of weeks ago about how we reconfiguring how we do their, their dispersments. So rather than doing a dispersment twice a year, they would come in, like many other municipalities do, on a monthly basis, and we would pay their, we would pay their payables through that, through that line, and then any, any money left over at the end of the year would be returned to the, if any, would be returned to the general fund, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, a while back, and I wasn't even for that at first, I was trying to be a little more stringent than that, but trying to see a little bit of your point, and your point, I think really, we need to control the money as much as we can, we still never gonna know what they make on outside things, but I guess we can't worry about that. They use that however they use it, but.
Yeah, and there is value to that program. I know Coventry, Franklin, just two towns off top I know about, among many others run that, run, run the same sort of arrangement with their volunteer fire department that way. I have no problem, we gave them enough, enough leeway so that they could adjust their internal procedures to do, to do processes, which, yeah, and enough leeway on our end so we could adjust our internal procedures, because it would be more work for both Pat and Lori, who would be taking that on and running that through. I have no problem going down that path, I know I, it wasn't well, that, that idea wasn't too well received a few weeks ago, but we can revisit it.
I just think out of all of it, that's, that's probably very fair, most fair and equitable way that we've been looking at it, and I'm sure we wanna tweak that down the road, but I just can't stomach giving them money anymore and not knowing where it went, and I think the town deserves better than that.
John?
I mean, they're asking for 196.5. Which is a $50 increase over last year. Even if we went Mark's route, why would you both cut the budget and do that? Like, what's the difference between allocating 150 or allocating 196? I just think you're taking, you're taking two shots at them instead of one, and it's, all it's gonna do, it's gonna create tension between the fire department and the town, you're, you're kind of taking a scorched earth approach to it, I think. You know, this is the first year that we've had the committee that we're putting together. You know, we had our first meeting last week, they're, it's a pretty enthusiastic group, they're actually looking to have, so we're scheduling another meeting in April, and then get back into the quarterly after that. You know, one of the big questions we had, there was nobody there from the fire department first time, but also I don't think, I don't think they were necessarily sent a notice about it either, but like, you know, one question of that group is kind of, okay, if the fire department doesn't partake in this, we're just gonna sit around twiddling our thumbs and what's really expected of us, you know? The other question is, you know, along the lines of what is the, the kind of legal relationship between the town and the fire department, and how does that all jive? So, you know, those, those are questions that were raised and things that, you know, we need to get some direction, but I think that, you know, you're kind of putting us at a little bit of a disadvantage, taking a shot at the fire department, like, I mean, you'll certainly get their attention, I guess, you know, but you're not only, you're not only saying we're gonna give you, you know, 75, 60% of what you're asking, but also you gotta come to us to get it, like, you know, pick one, pick the other.
I was gonna say, go, 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 split the baby, that we could keep the funding at this current level that they are asking, and then implement the new procedures for dispersment of those funds.
I mean, I think that, that, that second question isn't a, isn't a budget meeting issue.
No, that's not, no.
So the first one is, what are we gonna set the budget at? And I don't think that, in all good faith, when they're coming in asking for $50 more than what they've gone off of the last year, I don't think we're acting in good faith if we say now we're, we're gonna give you, you know, 150 instead of what.
Well, I understand you talking what you're saying, again, I, I.
So, but I think the other thing is a different question. How we pay it to them, I think, is something worth exploring, but I think that, you know, if you're gonna do that, if you put a whole committee together to kind of, you know, engage with the fire department, I think that committee should be involved in that conversation, and I think the fire department should be involved in that conversation. And I don't think it's necessarily fair to them to just spring it on them.
Well, that's why we're giving them, would give them the, why I brought it up a few weeks ago, is to give them enough lead time, lead time to change that.
Right, and so you're gonna say, this is what's happening, get ready for it, as opposed to having a conversation in a year where, you know, I thought the goal was to get them to the table and have a conversation, have some transparency, have some accountability, and actually try to repair what's been kind of a strained relationship, we're, that's a hell of a way to start that.
Well, I've been, cause this is in the past, when there was a real firehouse, for almost 18 years in the fire department in town, we never saw money for recruitment, retention, or basically parties, we had our own Christmas party and we paid for everything. $40,000, I don't care how you slice it, is totally unrealistic, totally unrealistic. And this $25,000 income from ambulance pay to offset something, I never realized they were still doing that, that was something carried back from 20 years ago. So, I just think, to me, that 150 would more than satisfy everything they needed. Now, if you wanted to put it in for 196, what are you gonna do? And they say, we want our recruitment money, they're gonna say, in fact, they're charging for tickets right now on their board, so they're selling tickets, now they want the town to also pay for the same thing, that's double dipping, and I know that happens over there. And I know tickets are given away over there, like, there's no tomato to the right people. So, I can't argue about maintenance and training and OSHA and all that stuff, that's fine. But there's 50 grand here I can shave out of here and never miss it. I talked to other towns, their budgets don't come anywhere near this. And they do a much better, they have a much better program than we do. So I don't know. You guys can put it in if whatever you want. I just tell you, I think you're foolish. To give them 196,000, especially than $40,000 of it to me is nothing to do with firefighting, is to have a good time. And if they were doing that well, it could work a lot, but they're not. They're doing horrible.
I'm not disagreeing with your point. I mean, I think your point is a good one, and I think it's well taken. And I think that money going over there should be accounted for. There should be some reporting duty. There should be some obligation on that end. My issue with what you're saying is that it's literally never been done that way. And at a time where we're trying to kind of repair and try to ease into a better relationship with them, now we're deciding to take the stance and go scorched earth. And so I just think the timing.
Well, I don't think we're hurting them by doing that. I think we're bringing a realization to them.
But, but, but that's not, that's not how it's going to be. There's, there's, there's reality and there's perception, right? So you may very well be right that the only, that they may only need 145,000, right? But the perception of what you're doing is just going to.
So, so what would be the thing? What are we going to? I don't care what you put in for the budget. We're trying to shave the budget down right now.
Yeah.
So to put in monies that we know really have no merit, doesn't get us to where we want to go.
$50 more than what was last year.
That's a motion for John to reduce the ask by $50.
No, but 50,000, 40,000 gets us close to the where we need to be. It doesn't impact anything that they're doing. We don't even know how much money they used last. They refuse to tell us how much money they've used last year and how much they pocketed.
You approved the number last year, and they didn't give you any information.
Well, that's why I got more information. That's why I'm more enraged.
They're going to be more likely to give us the information if they're not angry with us.
I don't care if they are or they're not.
I know you don't, but.
We can hire another fire department if they stepped out of the way. I'm just saying. This, this budget needs to be shaved down. And the money that they're asking for, I think, is totally uncalled for. And you can put in whatever you want in the budget, but if they come and tell me that they want to use that 40,000 line, I'm going to jump in a brook because now that they give us more information on it, I'm really steamed over it. Just because they screwed a slashy doesn't mean I got to take it this year.
I think the recruitment retention has always been a good one.
Well, not years back. The problem with the place over there is they've had some personalities, and they never fixed that.
Yeah, well, and the difference is, last year, the recruitment and retention was broken down. So for instance, there was $10,000 that was for a, the annual dinner, which caused a bit of a ruction at the Board of Finance meeting, as we all remember, for those of us that were there. You know, I, both of you make valid points on this, and I do enjoy sitting back and just sort of letting this go. It's just to me is great. From my own perspective, I see the value of both your arguments. I think getting value for money for our taxpayers is important. I think making sure that the fire department is doing the job that it's tasked to do is important. To John's point, there's an opportunity here maybe to build something out, and they can understand that we are partners in this. But I know it seems like, from my own perspective, every time we've tried to build those bridges, they haven't really gone anywhere, but I can see the value of both of this. I'm willing to, and from my own perspective on this, looking at this total budget and understanding that that 196, you know, I would like to see that brought down. I actually like to see it coming flat this year. We're about $56,000 over what we were last year, which is, I think, admirable in that we've had a four-year inflationary cycle, which we've done a fantastic job holding our costs down. And so I'm almost, I could actually, I'm willing to, I'd be happy with taking this budget and moving it to the Board of Finance at this point in time. Now, I'm going to ask a question to Jordan, because you're probably tracking a lot of municipalities. What is the average budget? I don't want to, I hate to always compare yourself to someone else, but what are you, what are you seeing or hearing is the average increase on a smaller municipal budget this year? Have you got any figures on that or?
So I think, so I went to Palm for their, their meeting, and they were looking at about a 3% increase before Board of Ed, all the towns are working.
Yeah, Board of Ed aside on all that, because we have no control on that, yeah.
3% seemed to be what I've seen, for the most part. Chaplain last night, they were at like 3, 3 and 1/2.
Okay, so, so I do, at a straight two, we're actually looking pretty, pretty good in terms of what we're doing with our money and getting value, value for it, so. I don't know. I could honestly just move this forward. I would like to take a look and maybe actually have at the independent fire department oversight committee, take a look at somebody's thing, particularly how we handle the billables with the fire department and addressing how we can change that so there's more clarity and oversight in that function. But I could, I could easily move this forward to the Board of Finance, be happy with the numbers as they stand now.
One more.
Okay.
I may. 22 budget was $30,000 less than this year's proposed budget. The calls have been no more than in the past, the performance has been worse. And, you know, if you were 167, there's a $30,000 reduction. They didn't cry back then that they needed money.
Yeah. Yeah, no, from, and over the last four years, it's gone from about 150 up to 200, you know, over about four years. And it stood about 160, 165 for about three years. And then in the last, last two budget cycles, it bumped up 30,000. And we found that money based on the fact that we were trying to make a program work over there and work with them. So we have found, and that's the one thing I've always said and can say truthfully and honestly, is that we have never actually said no when they've come to the town and asked for more money, whether it's for equipment, whether it's for their annual budget. We have always been there and supported them 100% at every turn. Yeah, they, this year at the CIP, and I'll put it out there, although again, it doesn't really make it overall. Yeah, it does factor into the big picture, but they did reduce their ask for equipment, I think $25,000. They dropped down on that a little bit. So, you know, there was some, some takeback, some takeback there on the capex side, but yeah. So I, I don't, again, I will say from my perspective, I could move this forward and let the Board of Finance have at it. I think we've done a pretty good job. I see both your arguments here. Mark probably goes where I, where I stand on this argument, but I understand John's too, there is, there's value and benefit in this.
It's almost like rewarding for performance.
It is, it is, well.
And I don't know if they're ever going to get past it. I mean, it hasn't moved, what, we've been working over four or five years now?
Five years of my life, I have spent trying to build a sustainable, effective, reliable fire service. And five years of my life, I will never get those back. I do hope though, from what I understand, there have been other people within the state that have been looking at what we've been trying to do and at least understand and are seeing what the future is. And it isn't with each municipality having its own independent volunteer fire service that can't be staffed, that is not effective, that is not sustainable, that is not reliable. But anyway, five years, I will never get those back. Yeah, it's.
We're on a fourth fire chief since this all began.
It's been, for me, it's been, it's been a, an exercise in futility, but I hope maybe some other municipalities will, will see the light. So I don't know. So I, I'll make the motion that we move the budget as presented to the Board of Finance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
I'll go with the flow. I'll be at the Board of Finance meeting.
No, yeah, I hope, actually, we should all be at the Board of Finance meeting. Aye.
Aye. I'm the Board of Finance.
Thank you. I believe it's, I believe we're up on the ninth. So Jordan, put that on your calendar. That's a good one. Yeah.
This is coming once.
Is it a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, they do Zoom. They, yeah, you can, you can remote in. I think tomorrow, the Board of Education presenting their budget. Okay. Selectmen's report, John, what do you got for us? So you mentioned IFOC, so what do you got for us? I know you had your first meeting.
Yeah, we had our first meeting. It was just the committee members and Dan.
Chambers, yeah.
Again. I mean, it was a good discussion. We've got a good group. I mean, they all seem like they want to try to work with the fire department and actually, you know, have a conversation back and forth and, you know, bring concerns that the town has to the fire department and bring concerns that the fire department has to the town. And that's kind of, you know. There was some discussion and just some concern from our end that, you know, if, and again, in all fairness to the fire department, I'm not sure that they knew that we were meeting because the first meeting had gotten changed and moved around, and it was kind of short notice. I don't know that they ever got told about it, but, you know, there's nobody from the fire department on the board. There's no real way to force the fire department to participate if they choose not to. And so there's not really much an independent committee can do if, if they're going to, you know.
Right. And I'll reiterate, I know I made it, when, when the chief and I have spoken, I've made it quite clear, I'd like to have, not necessarily as a board member, because it's independent, but in the room, because that's important what they, you know, if they need to be there. So I'll reiterate that to the chief, that's important, that someone, someone is there. And I think he was on the, I'm not sure if he was on the invite list for that, but we'll make sure he's on that. Make sure Patty gets his name on there so they're invited. Even if the chief can't make it, someone from their board of directors, they should find like a desk that you can sit in on the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we're going to meet again the end of April. You know, there was some concern about, you know, it mentioned at least quarterly meetings and, you know, whatever. But we thought we'd meet again the end of April, just to kind of get things up and running and see what kind of progress we make, and then we'll kind of go from there, but.
Yeah, I heard Karen Sula, your husband, Ray's on, Ray's on the committee. So Karen says to me, oh, and this was last Thursday, Ray wants to come in one day and talk to you about I, IFOC. And I said, geez, tell Ray I'm away. Yes. But that's good though. She said, you know, for what, you know, I got from Karen was like, yeah, it was a good meeting. We need to meet more often. I said, I said, when we first set it up, we said quarterly because we didn't really want to, yeah, add too much to anyone's plate, but that's up to your group to make that decision.
I mean, it seemed like they would have met weekly. But, you know, I, I think, once we get in kind of a good established place, I think quarterly is going to be fun. I think initially, while we're trying to kind of make contact over there and figure out what we're actually doing as a board, like it makes sense to me more frequently. But we're reluctant to schedule a whole bunch of meetings if there wasn't going to be participation. So we're kind of just taking it one step at a time and, you know.
And that's good. You might actually come to a point where you want to reach out to their chair or director and actually get put on one of their agendas, because they meet Thursdays, second Thursday, third Thursday, the month. Say, we're going to come over, we're going to, we're going to go to your shop, and we'll tell you what we're doing. Yeah, we'll, yeah, the old, you know, Mohammed to the mountain, mountain to Mohammed thing, you know, and you can go over there.
But when they want to blow you off, they got no problem doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's good. That took, took a while to get that movement, so I'm glad, I'm glad that that's, that is moving in the right direction. I don't know. If you need any more information, let me know what I can. You know, we have call run data, we have data that we can supply you with.
I might have some questions because we were looking through some of that data, and it's just kind of a question of how you read it.
Yeah, usually if I start getting into the dingweds on it, the first person I call is John Don Francisco at QV. And say, okay, John, I know I asked you this three months ago, but give me the idiot guide on this. You know, E is engine, S is service truck, you know, this is that, yeah, because there's a whole, yeah, there's a whole shorthand with it. But yeah, that's no problem. We can work with you on that. Yep. Any notes? Mark? As for me, I guess last Friday, I was up at the Cub Scouts. They had their blue and gold banquet, so I.
Did they have that school?
Up in the elementary school. Yep. Yeah, that was good, good turnout. I was, the pressure was on though. The invitation said encouraging and some other words. So it was very difficult because normally I make stuff up as I go along. So actually, I wrote something to say because they wanted something that almost sounded intelligent.
You're mentoring them.
Yeah. It was nice. Yeah, they had good turnout. It's good to see the scouts up there are active. I know, well, we used to have a very active Boy Scout troop here, and I cannot remember the scout director's name. Lived out on Route 14, and, but he would stop in once in a while with you.
Phillips woman used to do it last night, but yeah.
It used to be very active, so it's good that rebuilding that, so it's nice to see that. Yeah, I think the school's presenting tomorrow night on the, on the second to the Board of Finance, so. That'll be interesting. And other than that, I don't think I have much else to add. So motion to adjourn. Okay, so we'll call it at, looks like 7:52. Thank you.